It is a great pleasure to be here today. Can you hear me in the back?
Yes.
Okay. It's a great pleasure to be here today, and I accepted this invitation the way I did because the reason that I am a political historian is because I am from Maine and I grew up hearing about Margaret Chase Smith. And there is literally no politician in American history who has been more important to my career and who got me thinking earlier or more seriously about politics than Margaret Chase Smith did. And I am just thrilled to be here. I wish my mother were here to see this because I heard about Margaret Chase Smith through my mother, who was involved in politics in Maine. This is actually not going to be a very good talk unless John Taylor comes and lets me into his computer because I've been locked out. I changed a lot of this last night after midnight. If anybody's interested in this book talk, it is on C-SPAN. But I'm actually going to do something different today. So if you're interested in this book and a roundup of what's going on in this book itself, that you can look at on the internet, I'm going to do something different today. So what I want to do today actually works really nicely with Professor Shay's material because I am going to argue that there's actually a very clear explanation for why we are where we are. And we can make some predictions about where we're going based on the history of American politics and really the history of America. And what I would like to argue and where I think studies of politics are going is away from the political scientists who look at the way electorates should be predicted to vote. And rather where we are going back to and where we should go back to is an emphasis on narrative, on language, on what America stands for. And there is a very clear division in American history between two strands of historical thought about what this country means and where it does best. And we are in extreme, at an extreme place down one aspect of that narrative right now. But always in the past, when we get to an extreme on one side or another, we spring back to the middle. And I would like to suggest that we are in a major realignment right now, that this is a major, this is an election for the history books, and that the next five years, not four, but five years are going to be very rocky, but we are going to see within the next 10 years, a return to what used to be called a liberal consensus. And I'm going to suggest that I can argue that based on history. Stop me by the way if there are questions, although these are the glasses where I can see this, so you have to actually speak if you want me to be able to see you. Your eyes go back around 25 too. All right. So what I want to do is I want to set up, change the, wherever you are. Amos, thank you. I want to set up two ways of looking at America, what American government is supposed to do and how we got to where we are. Rather than starting at the beginning of American history, which this book does, and I think that actually is fairly convincing about that, I want to start here with James Henry Hammond at a speech he gave in the Senate in 1858. And you know it as the Cotton is King speech, but it was really about the way society should work. And historians know it as the mudsill speech. And the reason that it's called that is because what he argues is that a good society is one on which a very few wealthy, educated, white men direct society so that it moves forward. And they do that by owning and directing the labor of the vast majority of people in a society. Those people are lazy, they're not very smart, and they, but they're very loyal and they're docile. And if their labor is correctly directed, what they're going to do is they're going to make a lot, they're going to produce a lot. That's going to make a lot of money. But the problem is if you let them use that money, they're going to waste it in drink, in dancing, in better clothing, in better housing, and it's going to be frittered away. What you want is to have the mass of humans creating and a very few people directing that because those few people who are directing it have the time and the connections to get good educations, to think deeply about things, to understand what's good art, to understand how to move society forward. And they need to have the financial resources to do that. And the only way to do that is for them to control the labor of the vast majority of people underneath them. But here's the kicker. The reason that, or the way this works is that you must not let those people at the bottom have a political voice. Because if you do, they're going to not like this system, they're going to want to have more of what they produce. And they're going to use the political process to, as he says, redistribute wealth back to themselves. That is a theory of the way the world works that is based in tradition. Southern, he is a slaveholder. He believes this is the way society works best. And he goes on to say that the Southerners have it all figured out because they're smart enough to keep their workers isolated by race. And he looks at the North and he says, "You guys are making a mistake because you've got the same system, but you're letting those workers vote." And what they're going to do is they're going to destroy your society because if you redistributed that wealth back down, it's interesting, he calls it redistribution, because of course redistribution is getting it up there in the first place. But if you redistribute that wealth back down, it's going to mean those people at the top can't get those educations, they can't make those connections, they can't travel in Europe, and they're not going to be able to move society forward. So if you let people at the bottom have a political voice, they're going to change the structure of the government. They're going to demand a government that responds to them, that levels the playing field, that says the guys at the top don't get everything. And what he is talking about is he doesn't want in 1858 for the government to interfere with the institution of slavery, which is in fact what's enabling him to get the perks that he's talking about. So in his view, and he says this in this wonderful speech, even if the vast majority of Americans want the government to do something, it can't. Because the government can do absolutely nothing but protect property and to defend the borders, but that's a completely different argument going on there that for my purposes we don't need right now. So the government must only respond to property. It must let property accumulate in the top of society, and in the case of slaveholders, it's about 1% of the population. It's got to concentrate up there, not because we're jerks, but because that's how societies move forward. You cannot redistribute power, political power, to people at the bottom because they're dumb. And this is a mistake. They're going to stop society from moving. This is 1858, and James Henry Hammond is an easy guy to set up as a foil for the man I'm going to introduce in a second because he is just loathsome, you know, in terms of American history. He's about as bad as it gets. And he is not very smart, and he is not very nice, and he is famous, most famous in history for sexually abusing his slaves, male and female, and his nieces. And that's where he got into trouble because his nieces were the daughters of Wakehampton. And he could never figure out why it ruined his political career. And he in fact blamed them for ruining his political career. Amos, I'm going to ask you to flip a slide, and John, I'm going to ask you if you can get me into the material again, or we could just guess whether or not I remember what I put up there. Abraham Lincoln, oh, thank you very much. Great. Abraham Lincoln is incensed by this definition of what a good society should be because he of course is one of those mudsills. And a mudsill in James Henry Hammond's version is the actual timbers of the ground that they use to drive into the dirt to create the foundation for a building. They were literally sills, like we all have in our houses, but driven into the mud, the mudsills. Lincoln's a mudsill. Lincoln though is one of the smartest men in the country. And he's worked his way up from nothing, and he looks at what James Henry Hammond has said, and he says, "This is crazy. This is crazy that this guy who's out there screwing his nieces and who goes to Congress and says, 'I'm going to vote this way on this bill even though I didn't really bother to read it,' should have say over my labor for the rest of my life." Now, there's a new book that I think is out, if it's not, it's coming out this month, by Sidney Blumenthal, in which he identifies in the introductory chapter that Lincoln actually thought of himself as a slave and compared himself to slaves. And I actually think it works. It's a really interesting argument that people haven't made, but I think it works because Lincoln looks at this and he says, "No, no, this guy should not have control over me. The way a good society works is for the government to respond to the will of the people." And what that will do is it will guarantee that a very small cadre of elite wealthy people will not control the entire society. They will, if you let them do that, they're going to gain the system, and they're going to run everything, and they're going to run it for their own benefit. The way a good society works is it puts the voice back in the people. It gives the people who are creating the wealth the voice in how the government should work to hold the playing field level. And Lincoln backs equality of opportunity. While James Henry Hammond backs property, Lincoln backs equality of opportunity. And he calls for a government that in fact lets people at the bottom of the scale have the same political voice as people at the top to guarantee that you don't create this 1% group that is going to run everything. He wants the government to respond to the will of the people. Why does this matter? Well, it matters because Lincoln is not the only one who feels this way. He begins to articulate his position, he articulates the position most effectively in 1859 at the Wisconsin Agricultural Fair. But in fact, Northerners across the country have been thinking this way since the 1813, I'm sorry, I'm all over the American history these days, since the 1830s into the 1840s. And of course, they've been moving west on the assumption that they're going to be able to control their labor, have a voice in their society, and not be squeezed out by slaveholders. And in 1854, with the passage of the Kansas-Nebraska Act that destroys the Missouri Compromise Line, keeping slavery out of the Louisiana Purchase Lands, when that happens, people like Lincoln, Lincoln as you know stayed up all night going, he was just beside himself over this. Men from the North look at what's happening with the spread of slavery and they threaten the spread of slavery into the territories, and they worry that the entire country is going to be taken over by an elite group of slave owners, a group they call the slave power. They don't want the slave power to take over the American government. And why do we care about that here? Because some of the leaders in that movement were from Maine. Slide, Amos. I hope these faces look familiar because they are very near and dear to me, and they should be near and dear to everybody in this room. These are three of the seven Washburn brothers, and they were from Livermore, Maine, about 40 miles from here in the Oxford Hills. And they signed on early to the idea that the government should not be taken over by the slave power. And with the passage of the Kansas-Nebraska Act on May 9th of 1854, everybody talks about the Republican Party beginning in Ripon, Wisconsin. That's a publicity stunt that is taken, that makes Ripon seem so important. There are meetings across the country saying that the Kansas-Nebraska Act must not go through because it's going to permit slavery to spread into the West. Once slavery spreads into the West, the slave power will have more electoral votes, it'll have more power in Congress, especially in the Senate, and it will only be a question of time until this idea of a small group of elite slaveholders running the country becomes the national norm and America will lose its equality of opportunity. People like the Washburn brothers and people from Maine say no. All over the country, people have anti-Nebraska meetings, but with the passage of the Kansas-Nebraska Act, these three men are instrumental in organizing a meeting in Washington, D.C. at the home of a representative from Massachusetts whose last name is Dickinson and who had a daughter who liked to write a lot. That will be going to be Dickinson's father if he does not see that connection. They organize a meeting in his rooms in Washington, D.C. They pick him because he's in the boarding house with the best food, you gotta love Miners. And they go into this meeting coming from a number of different perspectives, but they come out as a new political party. They come out as the Republican Party. And the connection between these guys is important because what we have here is Israel, who's going to become the governor of Maine during the war, Ken Waller has moved to Wisconsin, and Elihu from Illinois. What they do is they spread out after this meeting, not just them, but other people. Owen Lovejoy is also from Maine, his brother Elijah Lovejoy has been murdered in Alton, Illinois, in a fight over his anti-slavery press. And also, of course, they come back and talk to people like Hannibal Hamlin, whose chair is sitting out there. Hannibal Hamlin is also from Livermore, Maine, and his father built the house that the Washburns grew up in. I don't get to talk about the Maine connections very much, as you can tell, but I think they're fascinating because they spread out back across the country and they say, "No, this is not what America is about. America is a country where seven poor dudes from Maine can rise to become the governor, a general, and the founder of General Mills, that's why we know Ken Waller-Washburn, and the Minister of France, and a longtime member of the House of Representatives." This is what America stands for. It stands for equality of opportunity, and we must have a government that responds to that imperative rather than to the needs of property. And they organize the Republican Party to stand against the slave power. Well, what happens, as you know, is that the Republican Party finds its best articulation and finds its leader in Abraham Lincoln. And in 1860, Abraham Lincoln is elected to the presidency, not with a majority, but with a plurality. It is fascinating to me, I got into this this year, that many of the Southern states did not actually hold congressional elections in that year. They simply seceded because they recognized that the triumph of that idea of equality of opportunity was going to play out eventually over time. And so rather than actually playing the game any longer, they walked away. And this is fascinating because as I look at the numbers, Democrats would have probably have controlled the Congress, and at least they would have held the Senate, and Lincoln would have accomplished nothing. By walking away, what they did is they gave the Republicans a chance to remake American society. And we need the next slide. What happens during the war then is that the Civil War Congresses of 18, the 37th and the 38th Congresses, the Congresses from 1861 to 1865, have strong Republican majorities. They don't have, they do have Democrats in them, but they do have strong Republican majorities. And what they do is they wrench the government away from protecting property and turn it over to protecting equality of opportunity. So one of the first things they do is they pass the Homestead Act, which has been kicking around forever. And here's a little piece of trivia for you. The anniversary of the passage of the Homestead Act is tomorrow, 1862. They pass the Homestead Act. They establish land-grant colleges, that's another New England measure that gives us our public universities. They take banking out of the hands of New York and Philadelphia, and to some degree Boston, they've started that many in Boston, right then Financiers, and they create the Greenback to put money in the control of people and Congress. And they changed the nation's finance system from floating big loans by banks to selling bonds to individuals. They do many things to try and change the federal government so that it responds to the people, and it actually does what will help people rise. They do that very self-consciously, and these are very, very popular things during the war and immediately after the war. And I like this slide because Congress was adamant that the country would continue to be formed during the war, even though they were in such desperate straits for money. So they very self-consciously continued to build the Capitol Building during the war, and it's under construction during the war. And if you do follow my Facebook page, every time I, in Washington, I take a picture of, it's currently under construction. I like it best under construction because I feel like we're always constructing it. And when it's done, it just looks a little bit too polished to me. They also of course put in the railroads to move people to the Western mines and out to California and into the plains, and they push back the Indians to the degree they can during the war as well to enable more American white settlers to move west and to participate in the idea that free labor can enable you to work your way up. But they do something else that's going to be really important for the history of the country, and that is, new slide. They create federal taxation for the first time in American history. And people always nowadays point to 1913 under Woodrow Wilson and the arrival of the income tax. No, that is wrong. And I used to yell at Harlan Spector on the TV every time he said that. Because in fact, it's the Republican Party that creates national taxation, very much in the form we have it today. First by putting down what they call manufacturing taxes, which are not sales taxes, but for my purposes today, that's kind of what they looked like to people on the ground. They also created what is going to become the IRS, and they create the income tax in 1861. By 1864, it is what I've called tiered rather than progressive, although it is progressive. They are trying and they argue very strongly that a tax that people should contribute to American society at the rate that they can afford it. So that people who make more money should pay at a much higher rate than people who make less money. And they set the numbers where they are because in 1864, about $500 a year was a good living for most people. And when you got over that, these were higher numbers, but what you don't see here is anything that would be essentially confiscation for the real, there was actually a Democratic bill that was put forward to really wipe out people who were making more than a million dollars a year. And that was something that the Republicans stood against in Congress. Taxes at the end of the day cover about 21% of American expenses. The other thing they do is in order to protect people's ability to produce, is they change the nature of the American tariff system. And I am probably one of the two people in the world who think that tariffs are really, really interesting. But they're really interesting right here because our purpose as a tariff is essentially a tax on an imported good, that's not quite what it is, but let's call it that. And what it does is it protects American business. But what they do during the war is they protect everything. Every time anybody comes up with any new way to create something, they tax it to the point that there's a story that you couldn't ask the head of the Senate Finance Committee over to dinner. Because if somebody said, "Oh, you know, I went and saw this great thing the other day," he would go into Congress the next day and tax it. And they, you know, they were like, "Don't ask John Sherman over to dinner, for God's sake." They taxed quail legs, they taxed paint brushes of different grades, I'm sorry, but they taxed them, but they also put tariffs on them with the idea that they needed to build tariff walls to protect American industry to enable people to accumulate capital and to rise. So what happens is, going to be a news flash, the North wins the Civil War. And when the North wins the Civil War, this system is enormously popular in the North. It is enormously popular. People love it. They're getting educations, they're getting land, they're working their way up, the economy is booming. And this is a revelation because everybody expected that the war was going to destroy the American economy because that's what wars do, right? They destroy the economy. Keynes is a long way in the future. And the idea that somehow the North had managed to create a financial system that worked under Lincoln's idea that the government should protect equality of opportunity across the board really is a fundamental transformation in the way America and societies do business. This is a news flash to everybody. And it's a winning system, right? But here's the problem. Abraham Lincoln is assassinated, and the guy who replaces him is a Democrat, Andrew Johnson, and he hates this system because he recognizes that the Republicans are so popular that the Democrats are dumb. They're never going to be able to get a foothold anywhere again if they continue to provide education and opportunity, and he must get, he must find a wedge in this. He is also himself deeply racist. He hates the slave power. He hates the idea of slavery taking over because he wants white people to be able to rise, but he's very deeply racist himself. And he thinks that a large federal government, or any kind of large government, is going to suck taxes out of white people, and he hates that. So what he does is, my next slide. He listens to Southerners in the summer of 1865, and what they do is Southerners, in this wonderful twist, Southern white people who have, I feel funny saying this, but it's really worth pointing out, they lost a war that cost America $6 billion and as many as 600,000 deaths. You know, when people sort of lionize the Confederacy and lionize the Confederate flag, what country flies on its federal property the flag of somebody who took 500,000 of their people? I just can't get my head around that one. I never have been. The Confederate flag took on very different meanings after 1960, I get that. But the idea that somehow we should be celebrating that, probably most of us in this room had relatives who died in that war. I did. Mine fought for the South, but my mother was someone from Maine, not my father. But what Southerners do in the summer of 1865 is they redefine the war. They say it wasn't about slavery after all, we didn't really care about slavery. That's just wrong, just wrong. If anybody wants to argue that one, go read Alexander Stephens' Cornerstone Speech. Or look at the Confederate Constitution. But by 1865, slavery's gone. It's dead, even if it had not been destroyed by the Emancipation Proclamation about the 15th Amendment, I'm sorry, 13th Amendment. It had evaporated during the war simply because the Southern whites lost control of society. So they redefine the war in the summer of 1865, and they say, "You know what? The war wasn't about slavery, the war was about that large federal government." And the proof that the federal government is a terrible thing is right here. It's in the Freedmen's Bureau. Because in March, on March 3rd of 1865, right before the end of Congress, congressmen look at the fact that Southerners are literally starving to death after the war. They are dying. And they look at that situation and they say, "We don't want to be in the welfare business, but something has to let these people transition from the war to a free-labor society, from their previous society and the devastation of the war to a new society." And Congress has a role in making sure its people don't die. So it sets up the Bureau for refugees who were white, freedmen, and abandoned lands. That's what it's called. It quickly gets dubbed the Freedmen's Bureau, although it helps white people as well as black people. And it, we jumped a slide, but that's okay, I'm going to get there in a second. It goes into the South to try and get African-Americans to work on the land and to try and stop the deaths, among other things, to get hospital care, but also to provide police, some sort of policing of the South because when the Confederacy collapses, so do all the police forces. And the cities, for example, are devastated, and people are getting killed, and there are mobs, it's really not a good situation. But what they discover is that when the Southerners start to put together new constitutions under Johnson, they also put in place things that are called Black Codes. And under the Black Codes, African-Americans are essentially reduced to a system that looks very much like slavery. And crucially, they can't testify in court. They can't sit on juries, they can't testify in courts. So Freedmen, the Freedmen's Bureau officials, who for a kind of weird reason are under the Army, start holding their own courts. And in those courts, they decide in favor of African-Americans 68% of the time, the people who study have come up with that number. And what Southern whites say is that, "We told you, we told you, if you used a government to help people at large, what it was going to do is it's going to suck your tax dollars by funding people like the Freedmen's Bureau officials, and it's going to be helping lazy black people." That's where that argument comes from, this is summer of 1865. And Johnson picks it up in 1866 when he vetoes the expanded Freedmen's Bureau, which was designed to do two things. It was designed to guarantee that African-Americans could testify in court so that they actually could tell their side of the story, which is why when people say to me that they don't want to do their jury duty, I go ballistic because being able to tell your story in court is the secret to guaranteeing that you're not going to be, you know, murdered and your property isn't going to be taken. He vetoes that, and he also vetoes another piece of the Freedmen's Bureau that nobody ever remembers, and it was so crucial. And that was that the expanded Freedmen's Bureau provided for public education across the South and the border states. Imagine if we had had public schools in the South and the border states, which by population since 1866. And he vetoes that. Congress passes it over as veto, but they strip out both of those provisions. He also vetoes the Civil Rights Act of 1866 with the argument that, first of all, surely Congress could not mean that Chinese people, African-Americans, Indians, that those people were equal to white people. And Congress picks that language up almost exactly in the 14th Amendment, so they did mean that. But he also vetoes it on the ground that what this does, what the idea of civil rights guaranteeing equality of opportunity for people of color equal to that of whites, it gives a leg up to black people that white people never got. It gives an advantage to black people in the constitutional, I'm sorry, in the legal system that was never given to white people. And that, he insists, is un-American and And that, he insists, is un-American, and worse, it's going to cost huge sums of money to provide the bureaucracy to make that come true. And he vetoes both of those bills on those grounds. And here's, I don't know if you can see it, there's a cartoon that says, "If you are supporting Republicans, you're supporting the idea of destroying white people through taxation," that link to taxation again, "in order to help black people." In fact, this theme, the idea that the Republican system of creating equality of opportunity without regard to race or previous condition of servitude, and that's gonna include Chinese people, people are all hot under the collar about Fiji islanders in the 1860s, go figure, but that's in there too. Not women, women is a different situation, and I actually won't be able to talk about that, but it's, they're very important. Actually, the C-SPAN lecture that's going up in July was on women in this equation. This takes hold, the idea that the Republicans are using white tax dollars to destroy, to destroy white people in order to help lazy minorities. That's a, as I say, different story. This takes hold until, new slide, by 1871, we have the taxpayers' protests in South Carolina. And what they say in South Carolina, people who have traditionally opposed black rights on racial grounds, change their tune. And they say, "You know what? We don't care about race, it's fine with us to have black people have equal rights, we got no problem with that at all. We have a problem with taxes. We are taxpayers protesting the use of our tax dollars to support African-Americans." And South Carolina is a majority, has a majority black legislature very briefly in the 1870s. And they point to this as the idea that white tax dollars are being redistributed from hard-working white people to lazy people who don't want to work and who want a government handout. And if you look at that slide, you will see that while the caricature of African-Americans is quite famous, there are poor white people in that picture too. This is about not letting people who are not paying taxes have a say in their government, because they're gonna demand things like schools and hospitals and roads. And they have no right to have white tax dollars to do that. The taxes of that wealthy group of South Carolinians, same guys who were the slave power, they have no right to have that money to have that happen. Well, this takes off, new slide, in the North, not because any Northerners are very interested in what Southern former slaveholders have to say, but because this coincides with the rise of an organized labor movement in the northern cities. It's not a very organized labor movement in retrospect, but it looks like it's going to be. And what laborers argue, they begin to argue in 1866 with the National Labor Union, an organization I've always been particularly fond of because they named it so conveniently for tired professors. You know, usually they have some funky name, this one I get every time. They argue that in fact, in a way, James Henry Hammond was right. There is a struggle between labor and capital. And in fact, America is divided in two, and what the government really should do is respond to the people at the bottom, to the laborers. Most laborers don't think that way at all. What they want to do is they want to use the government to level the playing field. They want to stop the move toward big business that's happened during the Civil War, and they want to get more of the pie for themselves fairly. But that's not the way it plays out in the American press, especially in the North, because that happens to coincide, in a tax protest coincide with the Paris Commune. The Paris Commune is a situation in Paris from 18, I'm sorry, in 1871, from March through May, when the communards who are not happy with the outcome of the Franco-Prussian War take over the city of Paris and declare it a commune. Now, this becomes headline news in America because Alehue Washburn, who I showed you before, is the only foreign minister, he's a foreign minister of France at the time, permitted to stay in the city during the commune. So his dispatches are headline news in America because the Americans have just finished the transatlantic cable in 1869, and it was expensive, and in order to make it pay, you want to have that foreign news as a headline. And so the Paris Commune becomes hugely influential in America. What actually happened in Paris got me, I don't do France. But the way it plays out in America is that laborers have taken over the city, they are beheading people of wealth, they are killing priests, and they are destroying property. And worse, women are involved, and they're filling bottles up with this nasty stuff called petroleum, and sticking rags in it, and lighting them on fire, and throwing them in the basement of buildings and blowing them up. And this is a society run amok. It is being destroyed by laborers who've taken over the government. 18, my next slide, I'm sorry, I'm moving slides and you're not. 1871 is also a major issue in New York City because William Marcy Tweed is, The New York Times' boss Tweed is doing precisely what people like James Henry Hammond feared. He is using public contracts paid for by tax dollars to hire immigrants to work for him and for his subcontractors. Those immigrants in turn vote for the Democratic Party, and they keep the Democrats in power in New York City. This becomes, next slide, a big deal in 1871 because what Republicans in the North who don't like Democrats say is that if this trend, the Tweed trend continues, what you're gonna have in America is the same thing you had in Paris. And very conveniently, on October of 1871, October 8th of 1871, Chicago burns. The reason we have the image of Mrs. O'Leary and a cow is because that whole idea that Chicago is burning down because of laborers who are destructive and trying to destroy society, that story becomes a story of Mrs. O'Leary and her cow. So what happens here is that the Republicans switch their tune in 1872. And they begin to stand, instead of for equality of opportunity, they begin to stand against communism. So when everyone talks about communism, we all think 20th century communism. In America, communism comes to America in 1871, anti-communism comes. Actually, Karl Marx has been here, of course, before that, I'm sorry, I need a new slide. What happens is that Grant is in power, Charles Sumner hates Grant, Charles Sumner thinks he should be in control of everything. He wants to take down Grant, who he thinks is a backwoods bumpkin. And what he does is he, the only way he can get Grant, who did something that people liked, oh, I know, he won the Civil War, is by saying that James Henry Hammond was right, that in fact, Grant is deliberately supporting the Republican Party in the Southern states, giving black people advantages they should not have, paid for by tax dollars solely to stay in power. And his partner in crime here is Carl Shirts. And the reason that I put them up here, they're very, very good friends, is because this is going to be a major theme in American history because of this fellow, and one might even say that this fellow patted himself on Carl Shirts, might one not? You know who that is?
Is that Joseph Pulitzer?
It is Joseph Pulitzer. That's how he gets his start. This is the central moment for Joseph Pulitzer's life. Pulitzer goes on to dominate American polit, I'm sorry, American newspapers for the 19th century. Meanwhile, Grant then realizes he's got a real problem in the election of 1872. He must, must, must hold New York. Because New York, I'm sorry, next slide. Because New York has more electoral votes than anyplace else. And in order to hold New York, he's gotta hold New York City, and in order to hold New York City, he's got to hold Wall Street. And the Republican Party marries itself to Wall Street, not in 1896, as Dr. Shay said, but in 1872. So, I set that up for you in a very long way, because now I'm gonna run out the clock really fast for the rest of American history. What I set up for you was the idea of equality of opportunity, the logical backlash against that because of the link between taxes and help to minority populations, the backlash that then creates the Republican Party wedding itself to big business, and in each of the cycles in American history, that leads to a financial crash. What happens is the party ties itself to big business, new slide, very famous picture here of J.D. Rockefeller playing with, playing with the government and the Congress belonging to, I'm sorry, the White House belonging to, I can't see which that is, but belonging to oil. And you have the party, new slide, with Benjamin Harris, by the time you get to Benjamin Harrison, saying, "Either we are right, that you must continue to protect big business, those people at the top, and they must run society, or the Democrats are right, that in fact, people at the bottom should control society. But this difference is the difference between success and failure. If you turn away from the Republicans and let the Democrats, let the people have a say, you're going not only to destroy the Republican Party, you are going to bring on the apocalypse. America is gonna fall, and the world is gonna fall. You must vote Republican." So where we end up with by 1892 is, new slide, this old idea of equality of opportunity, this is a representation of equality of opportunity in 1892, that's an individual in front of Carnegie's homestead plant, and it's a set photograph with the obvious message that in fact Carnegie and this man are no longer equal. Carnegie owns everything in the back, this man owns only himself. Well, so why is this interesting in a particular interest right now? Because out of this moment, we get a brand-new Republican Party. New slide. On the heels of this change in the Republican Party, a young group of Republicans, the first people who call themselves progressives, changed the meaning of the word liberal. Previously, liberal had mentioned you to have a small government to promote equality of opportunity so that individuals are not crushed by taxation, for example, or by a big behemoth of a government. Under Teddy Roosevelt and people like Bob LaFollette, the definition of liberal changes to mean the government must get involved in the economy in order to protect equality of opportunity because industrialization has given way too much power to the top of the scale. The new definition goes through the exact same backlash that Lincoln's definition did. New slide. This is one of my favorite quotations in American history from a man who actually ends up being deeply involved, I mean, he's the guy holding the briefcase full of $100,000 in cash, T. Popdome, saying that basically, anybody who thinks like Roosevelt is a communist. Including a guy who goes on to support Adolf Hitler, so his bar was really low. The Republican Party then once again ties itself to big business, under Harding and Coolidge, especially under the tutelage of Andrew Mellon, I'm sorry, new slide, I'm looking at a new slide, who go ahead and insist on running America like a business, slashing taxation, providing kickbacks to business. And we have, again, new slide, Herbert Hoover saying, "This is American rugged individualism." And that if in fact the government worked to level the playing field and the economy, we would end in the same poison of the fumes of the witch's cauldron of communism and socialism. Democrats are the party of the mob, but thank God we have a government that knows how to deal with the mob. Next slide. We had a little problem with that theory, it created the Depression. And from the Depression, the Great Depression, next slide, we get a new philosophy of government under FDR, using the government, FDR's a very different kettle of fish, very different thing, but using the government to promote equality of opportunity on a different theory than the one I'm laying out. And this presents, new slide, the Republicans with a problem. The problem is, what are they gonna do? Their theory of tying themselves to big business has been thoroughly discredited. How do you come back? You have two options. You can go the direction that Thomas Dewey and his branch of the party went, along with Margaret Chase Smith, saying, "We like the idea of the government intervening in the economy, we like the idea of the New Deal, we just don't quite like the way they did it. We want more of a voice for business, and we'll do it right, we're pro-American, unlike the Democrats." Or you could go the way of Robert A. Taft, the son of William Howard Taft, who said, "No, we were right. Hoover was right, Mellon was right, Coolidge was right, Harding was right, we're doubling down on the idea the government must do nothing to level the playing field." What happens is then, next slide, I'm sorry, the Republicans take off after Truman as a communist. The Taft wing of the party takes over, with McCarthy, of course, investigating the Truman administration as being in the pocket of communists. And, next slide, the Dewey Republicans, one Dewey Republican stands up and says, "No, that's not what America's about. That kind of attacks on people is not what America's about." But on June 1st, 1850, 1950, sorry Margaret, Margaret Chase Smith made her very famous Declaration of Conscience, in which she said, "This is fascism, we are not going down this road, this is as dangerous as communism. Americans believe in a liberal," she didn't say this, I'm sorry, this is me, "in a consensus that the government must work to promote equality of opportunity without creating communism." On the heels of that, this man, Wayman F. Buckley Jr., I'm sorry, next slide, wrote God and Man at Yale, in which he took on this, what was shortly called the liberal consensus in the FDR terms, and said, "No, in fact Hoover was right. In fact, you must start from the proposition that the government has no business interfering in the economy at all, except to protect property and to protect religion. That's what it should do." And we have a real problem. And the problem is that if you put the facts in front of people, they vote for the New Deal. We must stop focusing on facts, we must stop letting people argue about things, we must promote and indoctrinate people into the idea, like we have with the Ten Commandments, he makes that comparison, with the idea that the government must do nothing, even if it's incredibly popular for the government to do something. That is communism, it is secularism, and it is antithetical to God and to what America stands for. That's a really important book, although it's appallingly badly written. Next slide, Buckley loses. In 1852, Robert Taft and Eisenhower go head-to-head, 19, I'm sorry, 1952, that's a problem with working in a couple of centuries. In 1952, Dwight Eisenhower takes the presidency with the moderate Dewey Republican party line, and he in fact uses the government in what he calls the middle way, which looks very much like the New Deal, except it's the Republican version of it. Next slide. This is a quotation from Eisenhower. In the 1960s, everybody thought it was some wacky, you know, crazy leftist, this is Eisenhower trying to reboot the American government after the death of Stalin. It was bad enough when Democrats did it, when Republicans do it, next slide, the Taft wing of the party goes crazy. Eisenhower, I'm sorry, McCarthy takes on Eisenhower in the 50s, in 52 through 54, and Buckley backs him in the book, McCarthy and His Enemies, and that's when liberal becomes a bad word. Buckley uses liberal with a capital L to equate it to communism with a capital C, and says that anybody who follows the New Deal or the Middle Way, the American liberal consensus, which is enormously popular, is a communist. He equates that liberal consensus that includes everybody from Margaret Chase Smith through JFK, those are all communists, and standing against them are the good Cs, the conservatives. That's when liberal becomes a bad word. People are appalled by Buckley and by this book, but in that same year, 54, we get Brown Book Board of Education, and the specter of, next slide, tax money going to integrate the schools in the South pushes this idea that the federal government is simply going to redistribute tax money to lazy people of color. And in 1955, Buckley starts National Review. This is 57, it really takes off, this is Little Rock. Next slide, 1960, we get Barry Goldwater running for president with the idea that the government should do nothing but protect property, it must stay out of civil rights, absolutely, those, that the civil rights, that the Brown Book Board decision is unconstitutional. And in 1960, Goldwater takes Arizona and five deep Southern states. 62, with the integration, new slide, of Ole Miss, we get the idea that helping African-Americans is communism. Wow. Isn't that a great slide? Next slide, Nixon's a moderate, but he recognizes that he, he's Eisenhower's VP, that he must pick up these Southern votes, and this is when we get the adoption of the Southern must pick up these Southern votes, and this is when we get the adoption of the Southern Strategy, as it was known, that he would turn the South back over to white Southerners. Worth remembering, Jimmy Carter's running around, new Southern governors trying to promote integration, um, that he's gonna go for that unreconstructed white Southerner. Next slide, people always think Stone Mountain comes from the Reconstructioners, it does not. It is a monument that is dedicated in 1970, the weekend of the May 4th problem in American history, so Spiro Agnew dedicates it, 'cause Nixon is tied up with a little something called Kent State. Next slide. By 1972, we get, this is from a private collection, not mine, but he lets me use it. Uh, this is an image from North Carolina. If you can't see it, it says, this is Klan country, love it or leave it, help fight communism and integration. Next slide. This theme comes into American history and into American national politics in 1976, but then really takes off in 1978 and 1980 with the election of Ronald Reagan, who puts this all in folksy language. The problem in America is not that, uh, all the many problems we have, the problem is the welfare queen. And he conflates a black woman with welfare and the idea that white tax dollars that are you being used to promote equality of opportunity are actually being sucked dry by cheaters like this woman. It's a new book coming out on her, by the way, she's an interesting story. Next slide. This bore fruit with the election of Barack Obama in 2008, when in fact, you had the combination of a Democratic liberal and a man of color going into the White House. From the minute that man was elected, he was the epitome of the nightmare that people had foreseen since James Henry Hammond. Next slide. Tea Party, taxed enough already? Just for the record, American taxes have not gone down since Ronald Reagan, nor has the bureaucracy of the country gotten smaller. What has changed is the people who pay the taxes has changed dramatically, as has, uh, who's in charge of the government and what the government does, whom it benefits. Next slide. So wrapping this up, what I would like to argue is to go back to what Dr. Shea said, and that is that what is driving American politics since 1951, I think, but really since 1968, is the fact that our political stories are just that, they are stories. The Democrats have their own story, and I could talk about that, but obviously I studied the Republicans. The Republican story is no longer fact-based, it has not been fact-based since Ronald Reagan in 1980. It has been based on a theory of America that came out of Reconstruction, and it depends on the idea that taxation does not help Americans. Equality of opportunity is not what it looks like, that actually, people arguing for equality of opportunity just want to suck white tax dollars out of hard-working Americans and redistribute them to lazy African-Americans. What Donald Trump has done is he's used that language, but, I'm gonna make a different argument than maybe you are used to hearing. He's a snapshot of the moment where people recognize, regular people, many of my friends are Trump supporters. I'm not. People recognize that they've been sold bill of goods. So when he uses the language, the incredible sexist language and racist language and all that, he's following that language that we've been accustomed to since 1980. But he's also saying that you guys got screwed. And the people that I know that are supporting Trump are not supporting him because of his racism and his, I, I maintain, if you dropped Trump in the middle of Africa, he would suddenly be anti-white, because that's his race. But they're supporting him because he says, you guys have been sold a bill of goods and you need to take this government back. So I see him as a snapshot. I don't support him, but I think that that's what he is about. At its best, though, next slide, the Republican Party recognizes the need to support equality of opportunity across the country, and I look for the day, and I foresee this day coming, every other day I foresee this day coming, that we have our next great Republican president. And that great Republican president, I'm watching two people right now, is gonna look very much like this. Next slide. Thank you very much.